The mayor's here. She brought young people with her today. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Everyone good?
Yep.
Okay.
Let's do this thing.
All right, welcome to the Lincoln City Council meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Yay.
In accordance with L B eight ninety-eight, please be advised that a copy of the Opens Meeting Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good-looking group here today.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business for our Monday, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting is a notation and a reminder stating that we will not meet on Monday, February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two in observance of President's Day holiday. Next would be our mayor's award of excellence.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bowers, members of the council. Thanks for having me back for another mayor's award of excellence, this time for September of two thousand twenty-one. I'm so pleased to be here to honor a team from our Street Maintenance Operations Division of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, Concrete Finisher Joel Brunkie and Equipment Operator Cody Mitchell. They were nominated by District Supervisor Clayton Engelmann in the category of valor for their heroic efforts to assist a resident when a bridge collapsed near their work site. The incident happened last July when Brunkie and Mitchell were at the maintenance shop on Baldwin Avenue, working on equipment and getting ready for their next job. A man ran up to them and told them that a bridge north of the shop had collapsed. A piece of equipment fell from the bridge and into a creek below, and that someone may have been trapped in the machine. Mitchell scaled the perimeter fence and called nine-one-one as he ran to the bridge. Brunkie ran to get additional help and a support vehicle. Mitchell made his way down the embankment to what turned out to be a skid steer loader machine, where the man who had been operating it had managed to climb out. That man was sitting in about a foot of water leaning against the machine, and as Mitchell approached him, the man passed out and slumped over with his head underwater. Mitchell held the man's head above water and talked to him. Brunkie watched for L F R so he could direct him to this obscure location, and again, Mitchell was talking to him until the paramedics were able to arrive. This team's quick action and coordination was instrumental in giving the man assistance quickly and enabling him to survive. Engelmann, their supervisor, wrote, "Their valorous actions are commendable, and a reminder that any one of us may be asked to help another in distress at any time, and with guys like Cody and Joel around, that help is always right around the corner." I hope you'll join me in congratulating Joel Brunkie and Cody Mitchell for their incredibly heroic and hard work and commitment to our community and to the city of Lincoln. And L T U Director Liz Elliott is here to say a few words about them, and then we'll ask you to speak after she's done.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Every day I'm surrounded by great people who do amazing things in L T U, but today is an extra special event because of these two, their quick action and thinking. I think it just speaks highly of who they are as a person and how lucky we are that they chose the city to be a part of. And the other day, I thought this was fitting, so I wrote it down so I remember, that the key to heroism is a concern for other people in need, knowing there is a personal risk done without expectation of reward. I think these two exemplify what a hero means, and we're proud that they're part of our team. So thank you both for everything that you do. Thank you.
Can I clap again now?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone, especially Clay for nominating us for the award, the mayor, the council, my family for being here, and that's kind of it. Thank you.
Want to point out your family to us? I'm sure you have your family.
My wife Jenny's back there. Standing next to her is my mom, my daughter Ashlyn, and my son Landon.
I'd like to thank you guys, the council. I'd like to thank Clayton for nominating us. I'd like to thank the mayor, and I'd like to thank my family for being here. And there's one right there, Sarah, holding gunner, and there's Grayson right there waving, and my mother, next to her in the red.
All right, thank you all for allowing us this moment to celebrate their hard work.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service to the city.
We don't have enough babies coming to council.
Our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda, sections one and two.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on these items? Is there anyone here that would like to speak on items one or two on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item one A is reappointing Peter Heinz to the Urban Design Committee for a term to expire February first, two thousand twenty-five, introduced by Washington.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Ward?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five-zero. Item one B is reappointing Emily Decker to the Urban Design Committee for a term to expire February first, two thousand twenty-five, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five-zero. Item one C is reappointing Steve Miller to the City Board of Zoning Appeals for a term to expire February first, two thousand twenty-seven, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five-zero. We'll move on to section four, our public hearing liquor resolutions. Item four A is manager application of Teresa A. Lichtenberg for Whitehead Oil Company, doing business as U Stop number five, located at eighty-two thirty-one O Street, U Stop number fifteen, located at seventy-one hundred Pioneer's Boulevard, and U Stop number twenty-five, located at twenty-one forty K Street, Suite one hundred.
Hello.
Hello.
I am Teresa Lichtenberg.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your application?
I've been with Whitehead Oil since nineteen ninety-eight. Been on a couple licenses before. The seventy-one hundred, I was their original manager back in two thousand two. I was on that license till I think two thousand eighteen, seventeen or eighteen, when I was promoted to supervisor. And so, been around a long time.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Can I ask?
Oh, yeah.
A point of later? We didn't, you didn't, we didn't ask you to swear in.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if clerk would like to ask you that.
I guess we're even. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Any further questions from council?
Would your answer still be the same?
My answer would still be the same.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else here that would like to speak on item four A? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
I'll be calling items four B and four C together, application of Nebraska Horsemen's B P A, Inc., doing business as Lincoln Race Course for a Class C K liquor license located at seven zero five five South First Street, and the related manager application of Christopher W. Coche. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mark Falsa and Rembold Lefty Law Firm, eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, appearing on behalf of applicant at Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association for both of these applications. N H B P A has long been the owner of property located at seven oh five five South First Street, which is known as the Lincoln Race Course, where some exciting developments are going to occur. For quite a while, that property was leased to an organization called Omaha Exposition Racing. That relationship ended at the end of this past calendar year. At that time, Nebraska Horsemen became the licensee for all racing purposes and began operating the food and beverage. There's been no material change in management, there's been no material change in operations. We're hoping they will when we get, once we get everything gets constructed out there. We're running it as is, it's just simply a change of owner. So it's the same managers before, same operations, and we respectfully request approval of the resolution recommending approval of the application, both.
Are there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Calling items four D and four E together, application of La Habana Social Hall, L L C, doing business as La Habana Social Hall for a Class I liquor license located at thirty-two twenty-three Cornuska Highway, and the related manager application of Celine Sanchez. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Celine Sanchez. I'm the owner of La Habana Social Hall, and I'm just here, obviously, you know, I'm wanting to get a liquor license. I, with being the owner of the hall, I think it's smarter and safer for me to get the license just because I have control over what goes in and what should not come out of the hall, and if I have the renters, you know, provide the alcohol for themselves, I won't have the control over that. And with the hall and everything like that, my competitors are having, like, are, their prices are really high for a lot of people, and especially now, a lot of people that had to postpone stuff from like COVID and stuff like that, it's a perfect time for me to open and have the liquor license.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Councilwoman Washington?
When will you open up?
I'm thinking of this summer, crossing fingers this summer. I'm just trying to get everything in order. This is one of the steps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on items four D or four E? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Showb.
Having had public hearing and seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items four A through four E.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Showb, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold, any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five-zero. We'll now move on to section five, our public hearing resolutions. Item five A is approving the consultant agreement between the city and S C S Engineers for professional services related to environmental compliance services for the Solid Waste Management Division in the Lincoln Water System.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Donna Garden. I'm the Assistant Director of Utilities for Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. This is a four-year contract with S C S Engineers, and it provides services needed to meet our regulatory requirements, in particular, sampling and reporting. This is for the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and the Resource Conservation Recovery Act. We contract these services every year as part of our routine requirements, and we've just decided to combine them into a four-year contract. So with that, are there any questions?
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on item five A? Anyone else that would like to speak on item five A? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item five B is Comprehensive Plan Conformance two-one-zero-two-six, application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the twenty-fifty Lincoln Lancaster Council, Lancaster Comprehensive Plan, and to approve a proposed amendment, the Dairy House Redevelopment Project, which is included as part of the Lincoln Center Redevelopment Plan, to revise the order of the project phases and identify that the Phase Two project will consist of the rehabilitation of the structures identified as condominium units G H I N J for additional offices and manufacturing space for the company occupying units E and F and affiliated with the Dairy House, L L C, and property generally located at three hundred South Seventh Street.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, five-five-five South Tenth Street. I just want to spend a little bit of time on this because some of you have maybe seen multi-phased agreements, but this is a multi-phased agreement that we are in a Phase Two of. This would have started, I believe, around November of two thousand ten would have been the first phase, and that would have involved, if you look on the map, these two areas, E and F, and this next phase will include additional parcels within the Metal Gold building, Metal Gold Building, over south of M Street, between Seventh and Eighth Street. And this will allow for expansions for Telisys. Future phases would come in. Those later phases could come in as late as twenty-thirty. So it's going to be a period of time for all of the development to occur. I can share some pictures with you. So here's, just to kind of get an idea of the progress that's been made on that building. These are pictures of the building prior to the two thousand and ten development, and you can see the windows and the design, you know, the exterior is a little bit rugged. The interior of the building was rugged as well. And what you can see now on those phases is they've replaced the windows, the awnings have been repaired. Some of the area, again, this is more of a close-up, and there's been tuckpointing. So preservation of this building has been a key component of this project. Metal Gold has a history that goes back to about nineteen oh five, and was acquired by Beatrice Foods, which is my hometown, so it's, or Beatrice, if some people call it something different. But there's a long history between Beatrice Foods and Metal Gold Milk that goes back over a hundred years, and then it was, it was acquired by Dean Foods, and then later became Land O' Lakes. So the name Metal Gold, I don't believe, is on the shelves anywhere as far as the butter and that sort of thing. But there's a long history. The building itself, here's an article from the Journal Star in two thousand and ten. That was really the end of the era for Metal Gold in Lincoln, was the closing of this building in two thousand and ten. Fortunately, we found somebody who had the wherewithal and the vision to be able to put together a project that will preserve this building. It's a key component of our Haymarket South area as far as preserving that building, and so I might, I may be gone on long enough, and I can stop there and answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
And Mr. Houston is here as well.
My map's prettier, that's why I put it there. Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is two-three-third South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen hundred, here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Dairy House, with me today is Eric Schaefer, who's a principal of the Dairy House, and also Anzi Tucci, another key employee of the Dairy House. Dairy House is an affiliated company with Telisys. This Phase Two project that's in front of you is of the former Dairy, Metal Gold Dairy Building. Dairy House acquired this block eighty-four in two thousand and eleven. The Phase One project, as Dan mentioned, included condo units E and F, providing office and manufacturing space for data security. At that time, Phase Two is contemplated to be Buildings A and B, and this whole block, obviously, as it was developed by Metal Gold, was done over a period of time and consists of really twelve separate buildings that were kind of cobbled together and work as one, and that's always been one of the challenges of the redevelopment of it. But Phase One was implemented in two thousand and twelve, and that condo units E and F were converted to the office and manufacturing space. In two thousand and seventeen, not really a really development project, but a key aspect of this block, the city council worked with Metal Gold, or excuse me, with Dairy House, and we granted easements and vacated certain right-of-way on Eighth Street and M Street and L Street to facilitate the geothermal well system that's in place. At that time, fifty-eight geothermal wells were installed to provide renewable energy for this building, and that is being preserved and enhanced as a part of this Phase Two project. Obviously, we are repositioning Phase Two to include units G H I and, G H I and J along M Street, with expansion of data security, which is a primary employer and add approximately eighteen to twenty jobs. This new project is consistent of approximately twelve thousand four hundred square feet, and the total potential investments, approximately three million dollars. Your agenda item day is really the redevelopment plan, that amends that redevelopment plan for this entire block, that is, shows its consistency with the South Haymarket Plan and the two thousand and fifty Comprehensive Plan. The redevelopment plan in front of you contemplates tax increment financing amount in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That is a small amount compared to the investment, and it's based upon the fact that we have an existing structure which will be renovated that will not provide the same incremental value that you'll see in a new construction project. We have probably eligible uses that exceed more than twice that amount, but they will be used. The tax increment financing would be used for facade restoration, sidewalks around the structure, and also the addition of another ninety-eight geothermal wells. They'll provide full capacity for the eventual needs, energy needs of this, of this block. The cost-benefit analysis that's attached to the redevelopment plan goes through those numbers, contemplates a new assessed value based upon a three-million-dollar investment. The new assessed value is approximately one point seven million dollars, which will generate approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars per year to support the tax increment financing amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The cost-benefit analysis does go through an analysis of the impact on infrastructure. Obviously, there's no infrastructure to be built as a part of this project. There's no municipal costs involved. This project will have a positive effect on employment. Another impact that we're supposed to examine with a job creation as a primary employer, and this project will not increase student population for Lincoln Public Schools in any way, shape, or form. We are working, I think we finalized a redevelopment agreement that should be on one of your future agendas in a couple weeks, and if everything goes swimmingly, as we anticipate, construction should be completed the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three, and data security will be into this portion of the building. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, and otherwise, to ask for your support of this plan amendment.
Are there any questions for Mr. Houston? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item five C is miscellaneous two-one-zero-one-four, application of the Urban Development Director to declare approximately seventy-three acres, generally bounded by Highway seventy-seven on the east, West Pioneer Boulevard on the north, and South Folsom Street running through the study area with surveyed property on both sides to be declared blighted and substandard as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Urban Development, five-five-five South Tenth Street. Before you is a blight study. It's not a blight and redevelopment plan study, it's a blight study only. The purpose of this blight study is, earlier this body approved an intent resolution, the intent resolution for the affordable housing that would go in on part of this property. What that requirement has is for the debt issuance of the city, for the city to be the conduit issuer of that debt, it needs to be issued only on areas that have been identified as blighted. This blighting will then allow the city to continue to work with the hoppies if they get approval on their tax credits to be able to build on this to ultimately be the conduit issuer of that debt. That debt is not recourse back to Lincoln taxpayers. It's full faith and credit only by the developer, and it does not obligate the city in any way, shape, or form. The additional elements of this, it has been, it is just outside the city limits. What you have on first reading is an annexation agreement that would come in, that would make this area fall within the city limits. So that will be coming back to you next week. All of these things have to be, assuming that there are approved tax credits for this project that's been proposed to N I F A, all of these things have to be wrapped up before the end of two thousand and twenty-two. The author for this is Tim Kealan, is someone that we have used consistently to determine whether the area is identified as blighted and substandard according to community redevelopment law in the state of Nebraska, and he's found that, and he's found cases where blight does exist out in this area. And he's found that, and he's found cases where blight does exist out in this area. And the planning commission did meet on January 19th to review this and approve this on a seven-to-zero vote. I'll stop there and answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin? Councilman Washington?
Thank you very much. Director Marvin, we spoke earlier, but I just, I want to ask the question in public so that folks can understand. Can you explain a little bit more about the ability of the city to study blight outside city limits?
The, the law department is, we've had conversations about this, law department is okay with doing a blight study outside the city limits. They're not okay with a redevelopment plan to be brought before this body until an annexation agreement has been done. And recently, as an example of this, when we did Northwest 48th Street, there was a little parcel, and if you'll all remember, there was an individual that was having difficulty being able to get those lots platted. So as an accommodation to her on the Northwest 48th Street study, when we brought that back before this body, we did include that area as blighted. It would not be brought in as a future redevelopment plan, and it was not declared as extremely blighted. But as an accommodation to help facilitate development of her lots, we did go ahead and approve that small area that is just outside the city limits.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Director Marvin? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Sofu Housing LLC and Hoppie Development. With me today is Fred Hoppie, a principal of Hoppie Development. The blight declaration for the 73 acres is for that area generally south of Pioneer Street and west of Highway 77. Sofu Housing has control of 47 acres that it intends to bring forward for annexation and a planned unit development of a mixed income development. Specifically, the agenda item on your agenda for the blight study examines the blighted substandard determination provided by Tim Kealan dated July of 2021. Mr. Kealan did an examination of the substandard factors. There are four, according to the statute. He found there is strong presence of three of those factors. The blighting factors, there's 12 factors according to the community development law, and he found a strong presence of nine of those factors. The blighted substandard then determination conclusion by Mr. Kealan is that the area does qualify as blighted and substandard. I think this is one of the first areas that I'm aware of that the city of Lincoln has moved forward, moving forward with on its Affordable Housing Action Plan, as a mechanism to share the risk of development of affordable housing. The way I look at it, we have two different tracks in front of you. One's the redevelopment side, and this is related to that. Step two will be the redevelopment plan, then ultimately a redevelopment agreement. We also have the land use track dealing with the annexation, the change of zone, and the planned unit development. Ultimately, this area is going to be Foxtel Meadows Development, consisting of approximately 650 dwelling units, a mixture of low-income housing tax credit units and market rate units. It will be a mixture of housing types and mixed income. We hope to have all those items in front of you within the next few weeks. The first reading, I believe, for the annexation and change of zone is in two weeks, on February 28th, which will allow Hoppie Development to submit its applications for the two first projects of the low-income housing tax credit nature to the Nebraska Investment Finance Authority in accordance with their schedule. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I would ask your support for this blight and substandard determination.
Are there any questions for Mr. Houston? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Fred Hoppie, 1600 Stony Hill Road, Lincoln, Nebraska. Thanks, Tom. I'm obviously one of the Hoppie and Son, and we're promoting this. And what we have and what we're intending is a neighborhood, really for affordable housing, of about 47 acres. Now, six of that, 47 is the church, but the, the declaration of blight for this property is important because, for the entire property, because we've got the neighborhood planned out pretty well in little project activities for the entire thing. There's, one's a low-income housing tax credit 9% project, one's a 4% project, which you've already provided a intent letter to issue the bonds. Well, also in that 47 acres, at the north end, which will be later phases of the development, there's another bond project, 4% bond project. And we would be coming back to get a bond authorization and with an intent to ask you, the city, to issue bonds for that when the time comes. Now, we're talking about development, they'll go over a couple of years in time, not right away. But in any case, the blight designation is important for the entire piece because there are a couple of projects in it that could be using bonds, and it has to be blighted for the city to issue bonds for the project. And I would certainly answer any questions, if you had some.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing, oop.
I understand this, basically you're declaring farmland blighted. And, well, you can do it. I know legally you can do it, but just because you can do it, should you do it? Because you've noticed in legislature, there's started to be some pushback against TIF. Different, there's about three bills dealing with TIF in the process now. I think it is because some people are looking at that and think, this is not what we had in mind when we first passed TIF. We envisioned decaying, abandoned buildings being torn down, and new apartments. I don't think, I envision a tax increment financing being used to develop farmland. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Mr. Houston, would you like to provide a rebuttal?
The only thing I would suggest is that you have a report in front of you prepared by a qualified consultant that does blight studies all across the state. It is a little bit non-traditional from a blight studies perspective, but it is also one of the few financing tools that can be used. And I believe that the findings are legally sufficient, and I think it's compliance with the Nebraska Community Development Law, and I'd ask you to support it.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Mr. Houston? Okay, seeing none. We had opening, we had a public hearing, and we had a rebuttal, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
I'll be calling items 5D, approving the interlocal agreement between the city and Lancaster County to cooperate on the construction and funding of a county broadband conduit system.
Nancy Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. This is an interlocal agreement between the city and the county to create a conduit, the way that I understand it, broadband system outside the city of Lincoln and the county, which will allow multiple internet service providers to provide broadband to communities. The purpose of the interlocal is that it grants authority to the information services, to the IS Department, to build and manage the county broadband program. It defines the obligations of the IS, the city, and the county. It identifies how the program will be, it identifies the program design, construction, and ongoing operations. IS responsibilities essentially are to manage the project, including maintaining financial records for reporting. They will submit a budget for the county board at least annually. The county will pay for the bid, design, construction costs with ARPA funding, American Rescue Plan Act, pay the ongoing operational costs, pay costs for maintenance of the conduit. And the county will also ensure compliance with ARPA funding. We do have Mr. Don Ferris from the IS Department that could also help answer questions and provide additional explanation as needed. We may actually have a map, I think, to show. We also have the CIO from the IS Department as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have right now.
Are there any questions for Mr. Christie? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Yeah, sure.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item, 5D? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
Item 5E is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for January 16th through January 31st, 2022.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Thank you for your service to our community. I've lived in Lincoln my entire life and truly believe it's one of the best cities in America to call home, and I appreciate the work you do to continue that legacy. My name is Ben Powell, I live at 614 North 26th Street, and I'm before you today regarding a claim against Lincoln Water System damaging our curb stop. I'm aware of the Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 1718110, that states, "The owner of the premise must maintain curb stops in good repair and operable condition at their own expense." My claim is in full knowledge of and in compliance with this code. I'll briefly restate my case that you are receiving in writing, don't have any pictures since it's underground, and then make myself available for further questioning. On December 2nd, 2020, an LWS employee was called onto my property at 614 North 26th by a contractor who was working on our basement. We were not home at the time, nor were we notified that LWS was coming. They proceeded to attempt to turn the stop valve at the street curb stop without our consent. When the valve was difficult to turn, they decided to use extra force against the warning of our basement contractor. This led to the valve being broken and in disrepair, with no other way to fix it other than a replacement. I was not notified of this incident by Lincoln Water System or the city of Lincoln. Instead, I found out about it from the contractor. When I called LWS Management the next day, Dave told me the municipal code, but admitted that LWS employees should have gotten written consent prior to working on the curb stop valve. So in review, an employee or employees of Lincoln Water System entered my property without my knowledge, began working on my property without my knowledge, failed to provide me the standard written consent, applied excessive force to my property against caution and judgment, broke the property, and left without notifying me that it had been broken. I understand that my, that the curb stop is my responsibility to maintain. However, I do not believe it permissible for city employees to enter our property, begin work, apply excessive force, cause damage, and leave without notification. If they, if these things had occurred to any other parts of my property that I am responsible for, reparations would be reasonable. I'm here before you today to request reasonable reparations for damages done to my curb stop, which have been estimated by Matt Johnson at John Henry's to be approximately $4,763. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you so much for coming down, Mr. Powell. What is the status of the curb stop? Is it repaired, or is it?
No, ma'am, it's, it's not repaired. But at this time, there's no leak, so we haven't had to try and turn it again.
Okay, thank you. And then, did you say your contractor called Lincoln Water System? Who called them to come out in the first place to turn it off?
Yes, yes, the basement contractor, Rich Welch, called.
Okay, thank you.
Counselwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm wondering if we could hear from either the city attorney or Director Elliott, if she's around, so we can talk about the, their view of what may have happened. Thank you so much, Mr. Powell, for being here.
Yeah, so here's, here's what'll happen is, city staff will come up, they'll share information, council will have an opportunity to ask them for questions. Then you'll have an opportunity to provide rebuttal to whatever LTU says or the city attorney says. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, thanks.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Christie, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Christie.
555 South 10th. Happy to answer any questions, just based upon what I heard and the information that we have. Yes, there was a call from the contractor, in the way that the LWS will handle these type of situations, it will be the owner or the owner's representative. If a contractor calls, they will be treated as a representative, giving permission to go into the home, or, you know, to deal with the water issue. The form is not actually required, it's not a statutory requirement. The form is an internal form that LWS will have an individual sign, and it acknowledges that they will pay a, I believe it's a $25 fee. In this case, the form was not signed, and the fee, the homeowner was not charged the fee. So again, the, the form isn't, while it is an acknowledgement, it's not statutory required, and it, at least, I think from LWS, LWS's perspective, it really is for their record to acknowledge the fee that they are going to charge, which was not charged in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. So I'm going to just make sure I understand, so the form is a $25 fee, which basically says, you sign the form that releases the customer from letting them in their home?
Well, they, it's, it's an internal, it's their water service manual, and it indicates customers shall be required to sign a water turn-on form and agree to pay applicable service fees. So that's the purpose of the, of the form.
Okay, okay. It just seems to me, if, I'd like to see this further reviewed, just because, a lot of reasons, the amount of the claim is $4,700, $4,763, and also because the curb stop is, has not been completed. So I, I'm concerned that Mr. Powell may be incur more costs, is that possible, than already the $4,763 if this curb stop has not been totally repaired? So there's, that's hanging out there. Would that be fair?
I'm happy to do more research. What I don't want to do is stand up here and speak as if I'm an expert about the curb.
Sure. I understand. Okay.
If it needs more work.
Right, right, fair enough. And I, I am not an engineer either, or an attorney, have you noticed? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Christie? Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Chair. I think I would ask, when you take the time to look at it further, if you would also come back with the, if we could get, see a copy of the form, I'd like to understand what the form's purpose is. And then I'd like to understand sort of the, if the contractor had the right to sign, I mean, could the contractor have signed the form? And I don't quite understand where the curb stop is located. If it's inside the property, it's outside the property, but on the property? So just a few things like that. So when you, when you, if we move to pull this, then I'd like to, you to tell us how much time you'll need to research this fully and get back to us.
Happy to do that.
Councilwoman Raybold?
And Mr. Christie, I also have a question. So what is the city's response? Their actions damaged it so that it does need to be replaced, and how is the city responsible for making that reparation or correction?
Well, it sounds as if we will be coming back on this anyway, and I'm happy to look into that further. But yeah, and provide a more thorough response. But I will tell you that the statute that was referenced at the outset by the complainant requires that the owner of the premises shall maintain it in a way such that it can be turned off without having to use excessive force. I will also, what I think we can also do if this is held over is talk to the, you know, the city employee who went out to the site as well, get some more information.
That sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Christie. Mr. Powell, would you like to come up and, or Councilwoman Washington, did you have another question?
Let's finish this, and then I have one more question about claims.
Powell, would you like to come up and provide a rebuttal? And it sounds like there's interest in doing a potential delay.
Yeah, just a couple of things to add. Thank you all for hearing this. And yeah, so we were never provided the form, so I'm not sure exactly what's on it or what its intent was, other than Dave from LWS had mentioned that that's standard protocol, that they would ask a homeowner, or presumably a contractor on behalf of a homeowner, to sign before beginning work on a curb stop. So our house is really old. It was built in 1907, and the plumbing's probably that old as well. So the valve is very fragile. And in talking with some other people with plumbing experience, turning one of those valves, if it's really old and hasn't been turned for a while, is a very slow and delicate process. It can be done, but it has to be done very slowly and delicately. And because the employees that were there today, or, excuse me, on that day, decided to use force and speed, the valve was broken. So there's not leaking water currently, but there's no way to shut off the water if there was a leak. And so it's just inside the driveway, not in the street, but just inside our driveway. There's the stop valve as well, inside the house, that's still operational, thankfully. Yeah, I think that's all for now. Oh, and in relation to cost, yeah, that was the low estimate, and so obviously labor costs are rising. And also, John Henry's mentioned that there could be more of the pipe that would need to be replaced, because city code states that if you put in a new valve, you also need to replace the old lead piping. And they're not sure whether the piping is lead or not. So it could be upwards of $10,000 if that's the case. So we haven't had the $4,700 yet to make the repair. So that's what I have to present today. Thank you.
Are there any further questions for Mr. Powell?
We'll look this way.
Councilman Choe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Powell, thank you for coming forward. To help me get a better understanding, you were doing some remodeling in your basement?
Correct.
You needed the water turned off for that purpose? So your contractor called the city out to turn the water off so you could do some remodeling?
Correct, yes.
And in the process of doing that, pipes broke, valves were sheared, right?
Just the valve was broken. Yep. So they were not able to turn the water off.
In the process of turning the water off, so you could do some renovations, the valve was broken?
Correct, yeah. So our contractor, we replaced our entire foundation, thanks to an urban development grant. We're very thankful for that. But he wanted to turn it off at the curb, in case, in the process of replacing the foundation, that they hit a pipe that was on the outside of the house. And so the interior turn-off valve would not have stopped water at that point. So they were trying to turn the curb stop. He tried himself. He noticed it was delicate, then he called LWS, and the results happened from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions for Mr. Powell? Seeing none. When we get to item 5E for the voting part, I'm assuming that there'll be a motion to delay this for a period of time. So just hang out till we get to the voting session on 5E, and then we'll vote to delay it.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. At the last time we had the claims report, we also pulled another claim, and I was just curious if we had an update on where the Fenson claim was? Was it Fenson? I think I, I'm a little embarrassed if my writing is too sloppy for me to read it.
I apologize. I do not have an update on that.
Okay.
And I did not have that one on my list, and maybe that's my mistake. But I do not have an update.
Okay, all right. I just don't want to lose track of that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak on item 5E?
Hello, my name is Nicole Essie. I am at 2240 Breckenridge Drive, and on, it's spelled E-S-S-A-Y. On January 19th, I was driving through the Isley Branch Public Library parking lot with my daughter, and we hit an unmarked pole, handicap pole, in the parking lot, and caused about $7,845 worth of damage to my car. And I am seeking restitution for that. I do believe that the city is at some sort of fault for not having a handicap sign posted there, which I do have pictures of, if you don't have them available.
Yeah, if you just want to set it on the Elmo there.
So that is the pole that is just in the middle of the parking lot. And for reference, let me find the other one. For reference, later that evening, I went back to take a picture, and mysteriously, there was a handicap sign posted later that day. And I'm not saying that that clearly is an admission of guilt by any means, but I believe that it is within, since the library is part of the city, that the city is responsible for maintaining a safe parking lot, and in this instance, they did not.
Are there any questions from the council at this time? Do you mind if I see the second picture? Do you want to just, would you hand it to our clerk?
And I also went back today before coming here to take a couple more pictures, and the pole that I hit is significantly shorter than the other two. So for, I mean, I know that this isn't the best, but by about seven inches, it's shorter. But yes, I can show you. And I'm sorry, which picture did you want to see?
The one where you said that there's a handicap sign on it now?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Two pictures.
Would you mind restating, when did you hit the pole initially?
January 19th.
At what time it did?
About 10:30 in the morning.
And then you went back?
About 5:45.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Ms. Essie?
Essie.
Essie, I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll go through the same process. We'll see if the council has any questions for any staff, and then you'll have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Does the council have any questions for any staff on this item?
Hi, I'm Tracy Glass. I'm the Assistant Director for Lincoln City Libraries, 136 South 14th Street. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Can you, so Ms. Essie said that there wasn't a sign within the post in the morning, but it was there in the afternoon. Can you walk us through the timeframe on that, please?
Yes. So after the accident happened, our building superintendent contacted the, contacted Pavers, who was our contractor for resurfacing the parking lot, and they put the sign up.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Councilwoman Raybold?
Do you know what caused the sign to fall, fail, or be misplaced?
Yes. So Pavers had, as I said, was resurfacing the Isley Parking Lot, and they dislodged it as they were doing that work.
Any other questions? I have a question. So the concrete miniature pole, immediately what comes to mind is when there's like a light pole in it, right? But this is just for it to like let people know that it's a handicap sign, or a handicap stall that people can park in?
Yes. And I have a picture, too. I can show you, give you further context. Let's see. So there it is. And then I'll show you. There's one, sorry, it's sideways. And then this is the second picture that shows the sign in another pole, in another pillar.
Okay, so there wasn't even like a pole sticking out of it?
Correct. No, the whole thing became dislodged when they were resurfacing.
Could you rotate it a little bit?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I have another question. Did you notify Pavers about the accident as well?
Yes. So immediately, so Pavers had told us they were going to replace the sign. And then when the accident happened, our building superintendent reached out to them to tell them they needed to replace the sign because they had not.
And I guess, so you put them on alert that this accident did happen because they had not properly reinstalled the sign?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
And can you, when did Pavers knock the sign over? When did they alert you that they'd knocked the sign over?
They, the resurfacing was, so November 15th is when the resurfacing was done. That is when the sign was dislodged, and they let our building superintendent know at that time that they had dislodged it and they were going to replace it.
That was November 15th?
Yes.
And the accident happened on?
January 19th.
Any other questions?
And they didn't put a cone on top of it, or anything like that?
Uh-uh.
Okay, thank you.
Do you know if there's any legal requirement that there has to be a sign in a concrete pole? No?
I don't know.
Okay. Fair enough.
I might have a...
You go to law school.
I might have a question for a city attorney.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Mr. Christie, I don't know if I'm mixing apples and oranges, but when we have someone coming forward with a claim on a pothole, I think one of the measuring sticks that we use is if the city was aware of and had an opportunity to fix the pothole, so if we had enough time. And so I am curious, would that measuring stick be a similar stick to what we could use in this instance?
Well, what I can tell you is that when we, when our office reviewed this claim, it was a decision to recommend denial based upon lack of notice. And so part of what is required, part of what is required, and one of the things that the Law Department will consider when determining whether a claim will be recommended for payment, is whether, had a duty and where we had notice of some, you know, something, some inefficiency, like in this example, the sign that was missing. I don't want to stand up here and say the requirements for sign or no sign. Right now, I know that it was not in the, it's my understanding this is not in the right of way, so it's not something that LTU would specifically handle because it's not in the right of way. But I don't, as far as requirements for any sort of signage beyond that, I don't want to just guess. But it was our position that the city didn't have notice that we needed to do something further than what had been done, as far as we were aware, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Mr. Christie, if we delayed this item as well, can you tell me when, like, the library hires contractors, what type of insurance are they required to carry for perhaps claims like this? Should a claim be presented to Pavers?
Well, what I can do is, I think probably the best way to handle that is, I think you said it suggested that it would be delayed. We can see what insurance actually was required, we can just do that. But generally speaking, any sort of, any contract with a city, insurance is required, and it's the expectation that, you know, whoever they're doing work with, they will have the required insurance. Now, it depends on the scope of work, what they're doing, the type of insurance that they might need will be dependent upon the project. But just generally speaking, at a broad level, yes, the city requires insurance for every contractor that it does work with.
And I guess it goes to the question if they were notified that there was a punch list for the work that they performed in the parking lot, that they needed to get addressed. It sounds like they were notified that it was missing the sign back in November. And how much time does that contractor have to get to the punch list items, such as reattaching the sign to one of those concrete bollards there? So that, I mean, I think we'll probably put a delay on this, and so I guess that's one of my questions that I'd like to know. In the, coming back, you don't need to answer it today, unless you do know the answer.
I, it might be best if I just, if there's going to be a motion delay, I can speak more next time.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Councilman Choe?
I'm gonna be, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna be that guy. We keep saying motion to delay, and our motion will be to remove this from the denied claims list.
Correct.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just being that guy.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much. Would you like to provide a rebuttal?
Someone left their phone up here. I don't know if... Go here? Okay.
I don't know whose phone it was. Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, okay. I just had a question for the city regarding the denial of the claim to begin with. First of all, he had mentioned a timeframe as the reason for the denial, and I don't understand what the timeframe is on that. Is that on the behalf of me as the claimant to file it with you, because it was filed within a week? No?
I think a better option, if you want to email the council, then we can try to submit it over to the city attorney for an answer.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Choe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm having a little trouble understanding what exactly happened. Did you drive forward and hit it? Did you try to back out and hit it? What?
Sound just like my husband. Yes.
I earned that one, thank you.
So I was pulling into the parking lot off of Superior Street, so I was turning north into the parking lot. And I was looking through the first row of spots, and I had decided that I wanted to turn and go through to park, then would have been facing west. And I turned my wheel, and it just came to a very sudden abrupt stop, to the point where I had to have it towed and all of the things. So, okay, thank you.
That sounds like me. You're looking for the exit. How am I going to get out of here in the future? And you were planning on, yeah.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Same thing, when we get to the voting session on 5E, that's when we'll be voting on this item also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else want to provide a comment on 5E? Anyone else here to speak on item 5E? Okay, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on.
We can have vote on these items. Item 5A is approving the consultant agreement between the city and SCS engineers for professional services related to environmental compliance services for the solid waste management division and Lincoln Water System, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Schob. Any discussion?
Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'd like to correct myself. That was actually introduced by Washington.
Second?
My second still stands.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Schob. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 5B is comprehensive plan conformance 21026, application of the urban development director to review as to conformance with the 2015 Lincoln Lancaster comprehensive plan and to approve a proposed amendment, the Dairy House redevelopment project, which is included as part of the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan. To revise the order of the project phases and identify the phases two project will consist of the rehabilitation of the structures identified as condominium units GHI and J for additional offices and manufacturing space for the company occupying units E and F and affiliated with the Dairy House LLC and property generally located at 300 South 7th Street, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
Just real quick, it's, it's great to see the continual transformation of this property. So I really commend the developers for moving forward bit by bit. It's going to be amazing. So thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none. May we please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 5C is miscellaneous 21014, application of the urban development director to declare approximately 73 acres, generally bounded by Highway 77 on the east, West Pioneer Boulevard on the north, and South Folsom Street running through the study area with surveyed property on both sides to be declared blighted and substandard as defined in the Nebraska Community Development Law, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 5D is approving the interlocal agreement between the city and Lancaster County to cooperate in the construction and funding of county broadband conduit system, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion?
We have a motion to amend number one on this item.
I move we approve motion to amend number one, which is a substitute resolution.
Second?
Moved by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
It's to include exhibits A and B to the new resolution in attachment A.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Okay, seeing none. May we please call a roll on the motion to amend?
Raybold?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Okay, now back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Yes. This is, I realize, a, a contract about broadband, and that doesn't probably get a lot of people excited. But this is something that has been in the works for years, and it is going to fulfill a really critical and necessary tool that we use in our communications across departments, across agencies, and I'm excited to see it move forward.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. May we please call the roll on the main motion?
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 5E is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for January 16th through January 31st, 2022, introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I move we remove from the denied claims the one from Ben Powell and the one from Nicole Easie.
Second?
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Um, let's call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0.
Okay, now back to the main motion. Any discussion on the main motion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I guess the, the reason why we would like to give more time for Lincoln Transportation and Utility or Lincoln Water Systems and our city attorneys to get back to us on some of the questions that we had.
When do you come back?
Can I call me?
Mr. Christie, do you know when it would be a good time for those folks to come back?
Or, or will she get notification?
We will, the law department, we can certainly contact both of the claimants that you had removed. And it's my understanding that they probably, they should have had communication with our office about today. However, I do believe there's not a meeting-
Next week.
Next week.
Next week. And so it should be the following week, but we can communicate with them and let them know exactly when they should come back.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion on the main motion? Okay, seeing none. Uh, let's call the roll.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. That concludes our public hearing resolutions. We'll move on to section six, public hearing ordinances, second reading, and related resolutions. Item 6A is approving an addendum to the lease and operating agreement for the Pinnacle Bank Arena between the city and the Board of Regents of the University of Nebraska.
Good afternoon. Chris Connolly, City Law Department, 555 South 10th Street. The University of Nebraska approached us a couple of months ago about the possibility of providing alcohol during the Big Ten Wrestling Tournament, which takes place on March 5 and 6. We had some discussions with them, which resulted in an addendum to the lease and operating agreement that we have with the university concerning Pinnacle Bank Arena. And this addendum was taken up by the Board of Regents on Friday and was approved, I believe unanimously, by the board. And so now it's our turn to bring it before the council to, for your approval. This would be just a one-time event. It is not a permanent amendment to the lease and operating agreement, but would allow for alcohol sales during the Big Ten Tournament. And so with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Are there any questions for Mr. Connolly? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on item 5A?
Can anybody just make a comment?
Yeah.
So I'm against alcohol being served at the university. It takes away from the small businesses downtown and the bars. And the mayor did it, you know, during COVID, and many bars shut down. So I think people should come to bars and restaurants and then go to a sporting event. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Could, could you please just state your name? Sorry.
Fan Sean Blythe.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Ms. Kinsey's on her way up.
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. We hate to see that even a foot's been put in the door of drinking that is authorized at a Husker game or a public event. We have a serious problem in this city with college student binge drinking as well as many treat, treatment facilities for alcoholism. This is the wrong thing to do. And it looks like it's simply trying to be another Big Ten football agency or area. I respect the new chancellor, but I don't appreciate that he has brought some maybe big coast ideas to Lincoln, Nebraska. We cannot afford to have any more issues of alcoholism being supported by authorities. We have plenty of bars. We have plenty of problems with fights and excessive drinking on the streets. We don't need it in the stadium. Tom Osborne has been against this from the beginning and apparently has lost some credibility in order to keep this out. So I do not approve that this agreement should be made at this time. And Watch Dogs would like to put a negative on this resolution.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kinsey. Is there anyone else I would like to speak on this item?
My name is Reginald Bart Gill. I live at 1621 Kennedy Drive here in Lincoln, Nebraska. My opposition to this is not to impose my moral values on anyone else, but my, I want to give a, a bit of a unique perspective. My son was a student at UNL some time back. I'm being known to him and his family since we're not drinkers. He had a proclivity towards addiction. He attended the sporting events here, he took of the tailgate parties, which he have in association with the game. That's a big deal on the weekends, tailgate parties, alcohol, everything. I buried James April 2nd of last year. After a nine-year stretch of sobriety, he relapsed and he never recovered. He tried, and he had a massive seizure and heart failure because of it. Now, my question is, when we as a educational institution, sporting institution, city official, when we promote the use of alcohol in a campus environment or associated with local sporting collegiate sporting events, state athletic games, whatever, what message are we sending to our young people? The other message that I, that I have, that I'm concerned about is, how many other Jameses do we have in Nebraska or surrounding states who come here to go to college? How many other children like my own do I bury and leave four children without a father? My grandson graduated from high school and turned 18, five days before we buried his father. I am firmly against promoting this. I've seen when we lived out in rural Saunders County, out in Saunders County, Will Agnew, I think is still inside Lancaster. The high schools out there, senior week, write a passage. Acreages, kegger parties, sure, they took the keys, wiped the students, I say, don't write long. But how many Jameses attended those events? And it was sanctioned and approved of by the community at large? I don't think as responsible citizens, city officials, and educational institutions, we need this. How many alcohol-related fights, excuse me, how many alcohol-related fights and assaults, sexual or just physical assaults, occur on our campus and in our dormitories? I believe we had one event not too long ago in one of the sorority houses on campus, and it was determined that it was alcohol was a precursor to that assault taking place. So for those reasons, I'm adamantly opposed to us introducing alcohol into the collegiate experience here in any way, shape, form, or fashion. We do, as Ms. Blythe said, we have businesses around here that serve alcohol. They're under penalty of law if they violate dram shop laws where they allow somebody to come intoxicated and get in a vehicle and leave. I don't see that taking place on the campus, at the tailgate parties or anything like that. I don't see them enforcing a drink limit. These people get in there, you know from the home games here in Nebraska how much foot traffic we have crossing these streets in this city. And they don't all use the crosswalks. You get an impaired driver in a vehicle and that, that's bent to this event over here, and there ain't just to get home, the game's over, let's beat the traffic, let's get out of the arena, whatever. And they're impaired and they're in a hurry. You're creating environment there for disaster. And I just cannot ask you strongly enough, do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing your story. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Connolly, would you like to provide a rebuttal? No? Okay. All right. Uh, seeing that no one else is here to speak on this item, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Item 6B is approving the agreement between the city of Lincoln and PennLink LTD to build a new criminal justice information system for the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County.
Good afternoon. Assistant Chief Brian Jackson, Lincoln Police Department, 575 South 10th. This contract basically replaces our current mainframe operation with our SEGA system. It implements modern features that promote officer safety and functionality of that system. We've been generally operating on the tools that we currently use since approximately 1978. It has been very successful. I would say it's one of the, one of the more proud items that we present just based on the cost savings to the city over the decades where many cities have changed. Their records management system multiple times. We've just continued to evolve our current system year in, year out to meet the needs not only of the police department, but the jail, but the sheriff's office, and the many other users that are, that are operated within our system. That includes the city attorney's office, Park, Park and Go has access to certain aspects of it, U.S. Attorney, um, there's just a large number of, of organizations that operate within that. This new system, instead of a mainframe, will be hosted on a Microsoft FedRAMP-secured cloud. So we're now migrating from our mainframe to the cloud system. And all the agencies that are currently supported by this, the SEGA system will be supported by this, this new rewrite if approved from, from, from the very beginning. This prod, project really started a number of years ago. We started genuine conversations probably about six years ago. We did a examination of our systems, basically mapping those out in 2019. That took about a year. A lot of that existed in the brains of three very bright city employees that have been working on this system since its initiation. These are all 40-plus year tenured employees. I'm very proud of mine, who's 50-plus as an employee of the city. And, um, but we needed to map out the connections between, between all of the linkages of our operations, and that was done. We did an RFP for the new system in 2020, and we selected PennLink. That's a local company with international roots to be the, the vendor of choice. And so they were awarded a phase one contract, and that's now complete. And now this is our phase two, which is, really begins the rewrite. This contract is a three-year project, is expected to take about that many, at the, at the longest, that many years to, to complete. Basically rewriting our system, it still maintains our needs in a current language from the tools that we currently use. There is not a student that graduates from the university in computer sciences that can use the tools that are used to, to operate our system. And so this will, this will recreate it in a format that we can hire any number of people to, to do the work and not have the specialties that are required to, to operate. It's $8.5 million. That's split between the city and county. The police department is the predominant user, and the city of Lincoln is destined to pay 45% of this contract. The county 55%, because while we may be the predominant user, the jail and LSO together generally makes it them a majority user of, of the system itself. The, the monies for this, we have identified as part of the CARES Act money that was awarded to the city and to be spent through, through the police department and law enforcement. And so our $3.825 million will be paid through the CARES Act dollars. This has went to the county board. It's my understanding. They've approved their cost associations to that. And so this brings it forwarded to you to, to meet that partnership. It is a public-private partnership. It is a public-private partnership, so it doesn't just stop with the rewrite. Uh, this provides Penn Link the opportunity to commercialize, uh, our system and sell it to other org, uh, communities that may feel, uh, it will operate also for them. Um, there is a provision, uh, in the contract that allows for royalties to be paid back to the city and county. Uh, uh, if they're, if they're able to commercialize this to a level, um, that makes it profitable. And so there's a value, um, for that as presented in, as written in the contract. Uh, so, and, uh, the city and county owns all intellectual rights to the system. So we'll continue to own this regardless of how they, how they sell it. So I know, um, the city attorney worked hard on the contract itself. And so any questions on the system or the contract, I would defer.
Uh, thank you. I would just add, I think that there will be, um, ongoing maintenance costs and the, and the, um, focal point of the royalties would be to fund the maintenance that's, um, will be required going forward. Um, I know that this is a, I just kind of want to echo a few things that have already been said. This is a, a long project in the works. It's been, I know, talked about, uh, for years. Uh, there are a lot of people, uh, involved. Um, and I know that when it was, um, first talked about, it seemed like a very heavy lift, if you will. And it's just exciting to, um, be standing here at this point. I do know that, uh, Pat Severson, the CFO of Penn Link is present and I think he may also, um, like to address the council as well.
Thank you. Yeah, Pat Severson, Chief Financial Officer for Penn Link. We're located at fifty-nine forty-four Van der Voort here in Lincoln. So, um, the interesting story with kind of talking to how long ago the CEGIS Center system was created. Penn Link actually came out of a coordination and cooperation with the Lincoln Police Department more about nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven. Currently now grown into about a hundred employees here in Lincoln, um, with selling law enforcement systems across the United States. So I think we can't speak enough about how excited we are with this project. Again, to further the mission that we've always had with supporting law enforcement. One of the mantras we have in, within Penn Link is keeping, helping keep the places we call safe or places we call home safe. So that's one of the things we constantly refer to within our organization and then supporting the mission of law enforcement, not just, uh, locally, but, but, uh, across the United States. So, so again, we're extremely excited about this project. We're, we are in the process of recruiting and hiring to fully staff this port, uh, this project. Uh, ultimately have multiple new hires that, uh, will be working on the project as well as kind of backfilling as we shift resources, uh, around, uh, to fully build that, build the system out. So happy to answer any questions about Penn Link or about the project and how kind of we see it, uh, going as well.
Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Chobin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Severson. I could give you another shot at that. Help keep.
Yeah, uh, helping, helping keep the places we call home safe.
Thank you.
Or helping, yeah, helping keep places safe we call home, so.
Thank.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
I had my little card that we have at Ed' Work.
I did think, um, I know that Mr. Severson earlier asked if the, if the council could vote, um, today and I don't know if you.
Yeah, we, we can expand on that a little bit. As I mentioned, we are looking at, uh, maybe advancing this, uh, for full approval today as we're looking to, uh, hire people now. We, we're in the, in the project and getting going on this as we're shifting people off projects onto new. Um, we're ready to start so we can have kind of full launch and full kind of execution on this, uh, soon. We'll have an actual lunch, uh, session with the, the key stakeholders within the, the city and the county. We'd like to do that right away. The first phase that, uh, you see the statement of work that's attached to the contract will take us about nine months. And so getting started now will ensure we kind of get delivery on that piece this calendar year. So the, you know, with the holiday next week and delaying a couple of weeks, it kind of puts us in a little bit of a tough position as we're looking to move people around and get, get offers out to new hires as well. So that was one of the requests we, we did have respectively in the council to waive the third reading and approve that today.
I just, I, I don't, I certainly don't have any objection. I would note that this is a, an ordinance. The reason that it's, uh, an ordinance, um, is it involves the proprietary functions of the city. Oftentimes you will see an agreement as a resolution, but that is why it is before you as an ordinance. And the county did, uh, vote and approve on this, um, last week, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Well, that was my question.
Okay.
About if the county had approved this and if the money, if the county's money was in the account, like in the bank and is our money in the account so that if we were to approve this two weeks earlier than we would have done otherwise, that we're ready to go.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions from the council? Any comments from the council? Okay, seeing none. Councilman Chobin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, Mr. Christie, this is for you. If we, so we're finished with section six. This is the last item. We're getting ready to move to section seven. If we, is now the point in time where we would make a motion to waive the rules and consider this for a vote? Or do we come back to this later?
I think that you can do it at this point. I think in the past we've usually made that motion at this point.
Okay. Mr. Chair, having gotten the advice from council, I make a motion that we waive the rules on continued.
Third reading.
Third reading. Thank you. And consider this item today.
Okay. Moved and.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion?
Well, I know this is really important, um, to, um, you know, the communications we have, uh, for, you know, within the, uh, law enforcement and I know CEGIS has been a project for, and a dream for a long time. Um, I certainly can understand why we want to move this forward, uh, as soon as possible. I mean, some of the people working on this program have been employees for fifty years. Uh, and they're the ones who know how to do this and so, um, getting another system is important. Um, I think I have another question for council though. Can I ask one more question for council?
Yeah.
Um, are there any snafus or drawbacks to doing this? Voting today. Voting today, yeah. Not the programming.
I, I can't, um, I mean, I, I can't think of, um, a potential problem as I, as I stand here right now. I mean, there's always the, um, general risk that there may be, um, some sort of a challenge with everything that the council does. But I can't think of a, a specific problem. I would note that just procedurally, I think this is public, um, comment phase. And I think we do want to make sure that others have opportunity to comment today.
Yeah.
Before we vote on anything and maybe I wasn't clear on that, but.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Christie, I appreciate what you're saying and Councilwoman Ward and I were discussing that. I think I made my motion too soon. I should have asked for additional public comment from the chair before I made my motion. I hope the chair will take that into consideration and ask for a comment.
Any other questions from the council at this time for these two folks? Okay, seeing none. Um, I'll have you both sit down and then I'll see if there's any, uh, one of the audience that would like to provide comment on this item.
Come.
Is there, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item?
Samuel Lyon, Lincoln, Nebraska, address on file. My only comment is in hearing your motion to, I think, uh, you said waive rules, but I think you're mentioning to suspend rules.
Yes.
Yeah, so my only, my only comment on suspending rules, and this is a conversation that we've had, um, on an ongoing basis. Um, I mentioned, uh, in March sixteenth, um, this council suspended rules, um, in order to hear an emergency declaration, uh, extension that today is seven hundred days later. Today is the seven hundredth day, uh, from March sixteenth when that declaration was approved. Um, so this, this, this item may be urgent, may be necessary, and it may be indeed the time to suspend rules. Um, but my recommendation to this council would be when you suspend rules, you're essentially giving yourself permission to break the law. And occasionally, yeah, I, I see you, uh, shaking your head and I realize it's within the law because, because the law states that you can suspend the rules in order to go against the charter, which makes it not against the law. Um, but essentially those rules are there for a reason and they're the charter rules. They're not some, well, this is policy. I'm sorry, but this is policy. This, it's not policy. It's the charter rules. And the charter rules are essentially the bedrock of Lincoln law. And so for that, I would just recommend that this council tread very carefully in suspending rules. And I've mentioned this before, but I, I noticed, uh, at the beginning of this whole, um, emergency declaration thing, there was another opportunity to suspend rules and it was a similar, was for the, um, emergency, for the emergency dispatch system. And the thought was if we do this now, we'll save potentially a, a lot of money, thousands and thousands of dollars. And if there's an emergency, we can't meet and for some reason we can't vote on it, um, it could cost the City of Lincoln thousands and thousands of dollars. And as I watched that tape of some of the individuals on, in this council, I could see the, I could see the contemplation that you were having. You were, you were not just rushing forward to suspend the rules because that was what was easy in the moment. You really thought about it and you took that into extreme consideration. Since then, I've seen the suspension of rules to what, from the outward, uh, appearance seemed a little bit more willy-nilly. A little bit more, you know, not in exigent circumstances. There was no emergency that we needed to, to suspend those rules, um, to, uh, to allow Pat Lopez to confirm her as the director. She was already the director. She was already doing the job. Even the city attorney said that this is just a, just to make it official. But yet, even with over a hundred people giving petitions to you to say, hey, we want to come next week as the charter requires so that we have enough time to come. Um, you suspended the rules and you silenced their voices. And while this again is not to that level, I would urge that you consider carefully this time in suspension of the rules and every time moving forward and give it very careful thought. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment.
And Sean Bly, I have to come up to tell you, my phone is blown up. Samuel, you did great. Can't speak like Samuel, but I hope you listened to what he had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Richard Hollison. Yeah, I backed him up too. Again, there are rules in place for a reason. And maybe I missed something in the conversation, but I don't see what the emergency is that this has to be voted on today. Again, may I miss that, but again, you should have a very good reason to suspend rules. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment.
I'd like to echo their comments. Um, I think you should suspend rules when there is an exigent, you know, an emergency situation where action would lead to severe loss of life, severe loss of revenue for the city, things of that nature. Don't let this be a precedent that's set that you're go-to when it's convenient, when you want to push something through. Um, now, I personally, I'm not real familiar with the, uh, this particular issue. My feeling is, is if it ensures the safety of our city and the safety of our law enforcement officers, I'm all for it. But I'm not for it to the degree that I would say break our own charter to get it done this week as opposed to two weeks from now. Unless you can come up with some really good and pressing matter to break protocol and set a new precedent, I say wait and vote on it when, when the vote, time for the vote comes up. Um, and by all means, when that time comes up, if there's not pressing reasons for not approving it, give our law enforcement and correctional facility everything they need to do to keep the community safe and our fellow officers safe. And that's it. Um, my objection is not to the motion, but to the procedure.
Thank you. Can you please just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Reginald Mark Gill and I live at sixteen twenty-one Kennedy Drive here in Lincoln.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there anyone else I would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one else, um, would you like to provide a rebuttal? Can't find him in the crowd. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Brian Jackson, Assistant Chief of Police, five seventy-five South Tenth. Again, it sounds like the objections are more to process as opposed to content. Uh, I think the content stands on its own, on its own. It's a very strategic, uh, need for the Lincoln Police Department and the city of Lincoln itself. Uh, and we look forward to, uh, the opportunities to see it fulfilled and, uh, with your support, we'll get that done. So again, difference between content and process and I'll defer to you on process.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing no.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to answer any, any questions if there are.
Yeah. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none. Go. Thanks so much. Okay, um, I believe we left it off. Uh, Councilman Chobin, you were making a motion?
Motion to suspend.
Okay. Are you moving forward with that?
Yes.
Okay. And is there a second?
I had second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Uh, any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Councilwoman Ward?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, this project is very, really, very, very important to Penn Link. It's very important, or to Lincoln Police and Penn Link is very reputable in our community. I've worked with them in other capacities. Just to be clear, if we decide to, if this motion passes, it is not anything against the charter. Suspending the rules is a tool that this council has to do business with and it is our, at our discretion to do so when we see appropriate. It, it gives me pause, um, in this instance because I always get concerned about setting a precedence. It wasn't very long ago that, um, Tom Hewson was before us and asked us to expedite one of his projects. We chose not to do that. Um, in part, um, we didn't want to set a precedence for his particular client that was out of town and would have to come back. Um, and so we, we chose not to expedite that vote and suspend the rules at that time. That was not that long ago. So, but there is a tool we have available to us, um, to use when we see appropriate and I think we do that appropriately. Um, so I just want to state that for the record, Mr. Chair. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilwoman Erble?
I have to tell you, we all know how important CEGIS is to public safety, the amazing system that it is, the good that it does. I can tell you back when I was a county commissioner and I was actually on the IS committee, we were talking about CEGIS. We need to upgrade it. We need to somehow take action steps to preserve and protect it because it is such a phenomenal tool that was crafted in-house and, and we need to be focused on that. So, so many years have gone by and I'm so excited to see where we are at right now and working with one of the most reputable law enforcement software agencies, training companies out there. I would say even in the entire world, I think you were very modest in saying that not only do you work nationally, you work globally and also developed right here in Lincoln, Nebraska. So I couldn't be prouder of the work that is being done. Going back to the process, we do take this very seriously unless there is a declaration of emergency of what's going on, any critical elements we face. I for one do not like to give the authority to suspend the rules. Um, I feel in this case you have received assurances already from the county board. So that's good enough to go forward with at least four point two million dollars worth of work and hires that you can do. You don't need to wait for us to join that bandwagon, which we most certainly will do. But I, I do get hung up on process and I do, and I, and I reach out to the folks in the audience who provide testimony. They know I don't often agree with them. So, and in this case, I do agree that there is no critical urgency. You have been given the green line. You have been given the green light from the County Board to go ahead and proceed as you will, to continue to do the amazing hires that I know you will do. But I can't support a suspension of the rules at this time, knowing full well that we are most likely, within about 99% certainty, will be approving this on February 28th. And I'd like to stick with the process that we have in place. Unless it's an emergency, I don't think, I, I know I cannot support it at this time, even though I'm crazy about this project and crazy about PennLink.
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, let's put in call the roll.
Yes.
Ward?
No.
Raybold?
No.
Washington?
No.
Bowers?
No.
Motion lost, 1 to 4.
System works.
Okay. Now that we've taken care of that item, we had the opening, we had the public hearing, we had a vote on a motion, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item.
Move on to Section 7, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. I will call these items together. This has continued public hearing and action, but for the public hearing portion, I will call all three items together. Item 7A is Annexation 21012, Application of Sundance LLC to Annex approximately 5.45 acres, more or less, on property generally located southeast of South 40th Street and Rockabye Road. And the related change of zone 20002A, Application of Sundance LLC to change from AG Agriculture District to R5 Residential District, PUD, to expand the existing Grand Dale South addition planned unit development by 5.45 acres for an additional 120 dwelling units, 120 hotel units, and a 9,000 square foot decrease in commercial floor area with requested waivers on the property generally located at South 40th Street and Rockabye Road. And the approval of Amendment Number 1 and reinstatement of the conditional annexation agreement for 40th and Rockabye Road between the city, Bryan Medical Center, and Sundance LLC.
Good afternoon. My name's Kent Seacrest, representing Sundance LLC. And last week, you were very nice and continued this public hearing because of something that came up the day of that hearing about whether or not we could live with the conditions of the stormwater standards. We have worked out that with watershed management, and we now are on the same page regarding slope and guardrails and everything. So we are happy people. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Seacrest? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Since we did continue public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak on Item 7A, 7B, or 7C? Is there anyone that would like to speak on Item 7A, 7B, or 7C? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We cannot vote on those items. Item 7A is Annexation 21012, Application of Sundance LLC to Annex approximately 5.45 acres, more or less, on property generally located at southeast of South 40th Street and Rockabye Road, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 7B is Change of Zone 20002A, Application of Sundance LLC to change from AG Agriculture District to R5 Residential District, PUD, to expand the existing Grand Dale South addition, PUD, by 5.45 acres for an additional 120 dwelling units, 120 hotel units, and a 9,000 square foot decrease in commercial floor area with requested waivers on the property generally located at South 40th Street and Rockabye Road, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 7C is Approval Amendment Number 1 and reinstatement of the conditional annexation agreement for 40th and Rockabye Road between the city, Bryan Medical Center, and Sundance LLC, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Councilwoman Washington?
I'd just like to take this moment to really thank this, this project, thank the developer on this project. When this came forward about 18 months ago, there was concerns from the neighbors that were way off east of the project. And I saw, in reading through all of the reports, that the developer reached out to all the neighbors and initiated a roundtable discussion and gathered feedback. And I'm very impressed that they went and took that extra step. And I'm really glad to see this project moving forward. This is going to be good for Lincoln.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on, or we'll do a roll call vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. That concludes Section 7 of our agenda. We'll move on to Section 8, Ordinance's Third Reading and Related Resolutions. Item 8A is Amending the Employee Group Whose Classifications Are Assigned to Pay Range, Which is Prefects by the Letter W, to Change Titles of Equity and Diversity Officer to Human Rights Manager, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilman Schob. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Schob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 8B is Approving Amendment Number 1 to Agreement for PCS Tower and Appertnances Between the City and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC to Renew the Agreement for Three Additional Five-Year Terms, introduced by Ward.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0. Item 8C is Amending Various Provisions of Title 11 of the Lincoln Municipal Code, Equal Opportunity, introduced by Ward.
Oh, so moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Councilwoman Washington, would you like to open on your ordinance?
I would, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We arrive at this day, having come a real long distance from the imagination of our country's founders. We've come a long way because of the countless sacrifices of many who have given their lives and dedicated their hearts so that we who follow might partake in the Constitution's promise that all are granted equal rights and equal protection. The work of making that promise true comes not always in great leaps, but often step by step. Two years ago, the Supreme Court made a large step in recognizing that to fire a person for being gay or transgendered is discrimination based on sex, illegal under the Civil Rights Act. In their ruling, the Supreme Court expanded the definition of sex under the Civil Rights Act to include sexual orientation and gender identity as well as pregnancy, childbirth, and related medical conditions. Following the court's momentous ruling, the Nebraska Equal Opportunity Commission stepped in the same direction, aligning with federal law. And today, I hope that we take similar steps to align our municipal code with federal law in employment, housing, and public accommodations. And I hope we extend those same rights to active-duty military and veterans because there should be no allowance for denying a job, a promotion, or housing to military personnel or vets, and that they too should be able to file a complaint and seek relief. Our updates to the definition of race inclusive of hair texture and protected hairstyles takes us further in addressing race discrimination in the workplace. And the updates to the definition of disability and service animals brings Title 11 into alignment with current federal laws and ensures a greater degree of safety for individuals with disabilities as they access public accommodations. All of these are good things. Each of these steps puts our community's values of dignity and respect into action. Now, most of the opposition I've read and listened to in the past couple weeks draw on two primary issues: women's safety and the loss of First Amendment rights. Detractors have warned that the consequences of passage will be to encourage criminal behavior. The Police Foundation, an independent, nonpartisan research organization, has assessed the historical prevalence of this type of assault where nondiscrimination laws are on the books. And based on their review in Atlanta, Dallas, Miami, and Tucson, where they looked at data both before and after, they did not find evidence of sexual assault taking place in which men, under the guise of being women or transgendered, entered women's bathrooms to commit assault or otherwise victimize women. The loss of First Amendment rights. Detractors have tried to paint the proposal as constraining First Amendment rights, that the passage of the city's updated nondiscrimination codes, but passage of the city's nondiscrimination codes will not establish or prohibit the establishment of religion. It will not prohibit free speech or in any way interfere with the free press. The passage of Title 11 will not deny the right to peacefully assemble or ask for redress. Title 11 articulates the city's goal of equal opportunity. It defines discrimination and outlines the process to file a complaint with the Lincoln Commission on Human Rights. Title 11 then outlines the process the commission can take to investigate and, when necessary, seek remedy for clients. I am asking for everyone's support because no one should lose their job, their housing, or be refused service because of who they love or who they are. It's as simple as that.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Thank you. First of all, I do want to thank Councilwoman Washington. This has been a lot of work to get the codes in compliance. And then second, I really want to thank all those who provided testimony, those who sent in emails, both for and against. 10 years ago, the city council approved the Fairness Ordinance. 10 years ago, I was on the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. Elected officials held a press conference back then, right here in this chamber. I proudly stood in solidarity with so many elected officials in our entire state in support of the Lincoln City Council action. I want to thank Councilman Eskridge, our former councilman, who's here with us today, who's been an advocate and a champion for this legislation, though Omaha City Council had already passed a similar ordinance 10 years ago. 10 years ago, there can be no denying that the LGBTQ+ community had experienced acts of discrimination or worse. At that time, lawsuits were rising up to the U.S. Supreme Court to clarify what gender means so that this discrimination would cease and law would be there to protect individuals. As you all know, the U.S. Supreme Court, a conservative court, ruled in a decision two years ago, written by a conservative justice, clarified this, and it became the law of the land. In addition, actions and legal determinations since then made by the State of Nebraska Equal Employment Opportunity Commission were revised to also reflect these legal changes against discrimination and to be in compliance with the decision made by the U.S. Supreme Court. These legal actions at the federal and state level, in essence, rendered the previous city council actions moot. What we are doing today is what elected officials all across the United States do when federal and state law changes occur. We know that since the U.S. Supreme Court made this the law of the land, that more than 400 communities have done this while more cities are actively engaged in updating their codes to also be in compliance. We align and routinely update our ordinances, our municipal codes, to mirror these changes, and we've added safeguards to protect our veterans and disabled individuals. Why does this matter? We compete for federal grants and funds to allow us to hire more police officers and firefighters, to hire more juvenile court attorneys, to get funding for our roads and highways, to qualify for federal funds for affordable housing programs and housing assistance for recently released inmates and those facing evictions. The list goes on and on of federal funding that keeps our city safe and allows our city to thrive and grow. These changes make us competitive and in compliance to qualify for federal funding. It has been 10 years since the Omaha City Council passed their Fairness Ordinance, and all the horrific stories from testimony that was presented and emailed to us has not occurred. The sky has not fallen. Our Chamber of Commerce and young professionals have testified that this is essential for us to attract new businesses and retain our young people. As a business owner, we had already changed our EEO policy on gender definition several years ago, before the U.S. Supreme Court did, because we proudly have a diverse workforce that reflects all the people in our community we serve. Blueprint Nebraska also listed increased diversity as a core tenet to attract and retain our professionals. In their report, they said Nebraska also has difficulty retaining and attracting young talent, ranked number 39 among all states. Nebraska recorded one of the lowest growth rates of 0.5% for the population 25 to 29 years old. And that was from 2013 to 2018. Nebraska is losing people in the war for talent to other states. In 2018, the state lost about 3,300 residents to other states. This group of stakeholders from Blueprint Nebraska, from all across Nebraska, recognize that to welcome diversity is our ticket to economic well-being. We do this also because we continue to strive to be a more welcoming and inclusive community. We have that slogan out there that says Nebraska may not be for everyone. Well, we are all here to say, but the city of Lincoln is for everyone. Our city is and will continue to be an amazing and respectful place to live, work, start a business, and raise a family, no matter what your family or your business looks like. So I stand again in solidarity and support for upgrading our Title 11.
The very first city council meeting I attended was during the final vote of the Fairness Ordinance. I remember how I was so moved emotionally, how I was filled with hope for my own future, and the pride that I had felt in my city. I never thought that almost a decade later, I would be given the opportunity to cast a vote to update all of Title 11. Growing up gay is hard. Growing up LGBTQ is hard. You grow up wondering, is this where I can have my family? Is this where I can have my career? Is this where I can be a productive citizen and be accepted by those in my, in my community? This is not about me coming out. This is about making sure that people like me have the ability to lead a full life in service to their community, regardless of those that don't have the same values and don't believe that we belong here. The reality is, is that most people already assume that these protections are in place. And most people are shocked when they learn that they're not. Businesses want to grow and expand in a city that is inclusive. Young professionals want to put roots down in a city where they'll be able to flourish. I know that I do. Kids want to know that they belong in our city. All Lincolnites deserve the opportunity to reach their full potential. We owe it not only to our fellow residents, but to the next generation of Lincolnites. Freedom, opportunity, and keeping our families together are values that we all share as Lincolnites. And I hope that whoever might be me 10 years ago, that might be sitting in the audience now or watching online, that when we take this vote, that they're filled with the same pride and hope that I felt. And that when my time is done on the council, that they will continue to work to make Lincoln the best possible version of itself. to make Lincoln the best possible version of itself.
Councilwoman Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've also been a proud ally and supporter of gay rights for many decades, longer than I can actually remember. These updates to the city code in Title 11 are going to help protect Lincolnites from discrimination and will help Lincoln retain its younger population and also enhance our workforce development efforts. It's good for business. You've heard that as we've gone down the line today. I also want to thank Councilwoman Washington, and I want to thank the Lincoln Chamber of Commerce, the young professionals, the ACLU, the League of Women Voters, the YWCA, retired General Dale Williamson, my predecessor and former councilman Carl Eskridge, the faith community, and some of you are back here today, and so many others who offered their support last week at the public hearing and supported these important changes. The Supreme Court has ruled time and time again to protect the rights of gay human beings. This court is the law of the land. These changes are about fairness, equity, justice, and civil rights. Some days, it has been hard for me that we have even had to have this discussion. No one has ever told me who to love, where I could work, or what restaurant I could eat in. Can some of you imagine? Well, I cannot. Should we not be promoting caring, understanding, and loving one another when our world is begging for us all to get along and begging for peace? As far as the concern for public restrooms, Councilwoman Washington, she gave us the statistics today nationwide. But I just want to say as a reminder, there is a big difference between sexual predators and transgendered human beings. It's been said Omaha passed their ordinance ten years ago. Over 400 other municipalities have done so across the country. So I'd ask you all just to please consider not to let your fears of others different than you and me stand in the way of what is fair and what is just for other human beings. This city council absolutely does have the authority, as others across the country and our state, to make these changes and updates. Others are doing the same thing, and we are behind. Lastly, I want to say to my colleagues who are gay, and I'm sorry Councilwoman Beckus couldn't be here today. I am so sorry for the vitriol, the hate, and the scorn you have sometimes experienced in our community and in your life. You are not deserving of this. No one is. But you are not alone. You've chosen to serve in public office because you want Lincoln to be a welcoming place to live. You want Lincoln to be better. You have all tolerated more than you ever should. You are social workers. You are real estate developers. You are retired federal workers with children. And Councilman Beckus has grandchildren. I just want to thank you for your service and thank you for your tolerance. I remain proud, and I'll always be an ally of the gay community, and I'm very honored to support these changes today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ward. Councilwoman Washington, would you like to close?
I just want to say a couple of more things. First, thank you to all of my colleagues, to all the council members for your leadership and your good support and your good counsel for the last few years as we've worked through this set of changes. And I also want to recognize that this was not done only because I wanted to help protect other folks who are like myself, LGBTQ. But I did it because I wanted the tent to be bigger. I wanted to make certain that we were also offering protection for veterans. I want to make sure that when we talk about people with disabilities, that we open the tent up and make sure that we're as respectful as we possibly can be. This isn't a one-group issue. This is an all-group issue. And I want to thank the folks, and you may not think I'm sincere, but dozens of people took a risk and voiced their support and their concern. Thank you. Thank you for participating in the process. This is what democracy looks like. Sometimes it's loud. It's almost always like making sausage. But democracy is what we should all be working toward. And with that, I close.
Can we please call the roll?
Shoob.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Motion carried, five zero. Next item is Section 9. Resolution's first reading is Item 9A. Section 10 is our ordinances first reading and related resolutions, Items 10A through 10K. Section 11 is our pending list date certain, which is Items 11A and 11B. And our pending list is Items 12A.
Okay. Tonight is a public comment night. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and that is not planned to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time. Individuals are allowed a total of five minutes to speak, regardless of the number of topics. When you come up, please state your name and your address, and they'll receive a one-minute warning when there's one minute left on your time remaining. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council?
Samuel Lyon, Lincoln, Nebraska, address on file. As I mentioned earlier, today is day 702 of continuous declaration of emergency. We know that power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. Seven hundred days ago, the mayor came to this room and asked this council to extend the emergency declaration beyond the three days that the Lincoln Charter had authorized her to declare. Some of you today that are here granted that authority. But instead of having it expire in, say, two weeks, or 30 days, or six months, or even a year, that authority was granted indefinitely, an unending period of time that has truly been unending. Have you ever heard the principle that work will expand to the time allowed to complete it? I think something similar may be happening here. You told the mayor and Ms. Lopez they would have the power as long as it takes. And here we are, seven hundred days later, with still fumbling to try to get a grasp on this thing that we now know will likely never go away. I've lost track of how many extensions the DHM has had. In fact, just this last week, on February 8th, Pat Lopez once again extended the mandate, the DHM, saying, "This is needed to help our hospitals relieve some of the pressure." Journal Star quoted. But this weekend, a picture of Pat Lopez was released that revealed that earlier, on the very same day that she was telling us, "We need to do our part," she was maskless, standing next to a half a dozen other maskless individuals. Now, some may say, "Ah, she was just taking a photo op." Or, "It was probably just off for a brief period." Or, "Those individuals were probably vaccinated." Maybe all those things are true. But none of those exemptions were included in the Lincoln DHM that she wrote. She is literally holding an award for forcing masks on us while simultaneously disregarding her own mandate. And it's for this reason that by unanimous decision, I am awarding to Pat Lopez the Lincoln's Greatest Hypocrite Award. Now granted, this is just a regional award. However, this committee believes that with hypocritical behavior such as this, she could compete at a national level. Other notable winners of the National Hypocrites Award include Nancy Pelosi, who closed down hairdressers but then was filmed getting her own hair done at a salon. And speaking of getting your hair done, Mayor Lightfoot allowed no one else to get their hair done, but she happily indulged herself to one and when confronted, said, "I'm on television, and I care about hygiene." Unlike the less important people under her reign. Stacey Abrams was recently photographed in a photo shoot while surrounded by children at a school who each and every one were being forced to wear masks. And yet she was not.
One minute.
Pat Lopez is the second-high-ranking Lincoln official to receive this award. Last year's award was overwhelmingly deserved by Mayor Baird when she, with the help of Lopez, banned indoor sports for thousands of our Lincoln youth, but allowed her family's indoor sport, tennis, to continue to be played. It was just a short time after her family was held to the same standard as everyone else in Lincoln that indoor sports were suddenly deemed completely safe for everyone. It's for these reasons that we are demanding Director Lopez resign from her position and this council rescind the unlimited and unending power it granted seven hundred days ago. Power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. It's time to claw back the power that was so quickly surrendered seven hundred days ago. Thank you. I'll submit this for the council.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to the council?
Reginald Gill, address on file. I'd like to echo Sam Lyon's sentiments and comments. We've watched this draconian lockdown come up on this city. And time after time, they said, "Follow the science. Follow the science. Follow the science." We have election coming up next year, and the closer we get to that, nationwide, we see them relaxing the lockdowns and the mandates, supposedly based on sound science to begin with. Did the science change? It didn't. One of the most outspoken opponents of Washington, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, bad-mouthed Governor DeSantis of Florida for his handling of the COVID within his state. He had a great record down there in Florida. Yet she's seen partying and a public, maskless, in a public cantina, bar, whatever you want to call it, in the Miami area. We cannot tolerate laws and mandates that are good for thee, but not for me. We cannot tolerate a situation where you have an owner of a business. The mayor used the local police department to lock that individual off of their business because they failed to obey illegal mandates. But at the same time, there was a huge auction, auctioning off the personal effects of a sports figure. I won't say names because, one, I can't remember his name. He wasn't that important to me. But they had a big auction of his personal effects to satisfy his debts. Huge crowd. I didn't see the police in there arresting anyone there, hauling them off, forcing them off premises, shutting down the auction house. I didn't see any of that. We're tired of the hypocrisy. We want the mandates to stop. We want them now, to be ended now. Rescind the mayor's emergency declaration powers that you guys just handed to her. They, you know, she just continuously, Pat Lopez, time after time, month after month, extends, extends, extends. Mark my word, as the election comes forward, there's going to be a backlash and a price to pay, and they know that. I fully expect voting to take a different nature this time. It'd be more restrictive. There'd be million ballots. And nobody's watching the boxes. Please back off of this mandate. Let the people be free. Our businesses cannot take any more of the mandates. They can't. The other thing that you have to look at here is I go into a business, and you're checking yourself out because they don't have employees. They're getting enough handouts that they don't want to work anymore. They're staying in their panhandling within sight of a health wanted sign. That is, that's the environment that we have fomented in this city. I'm not from Lincoln. I'm here by choice. When I retired from the military, I chose to stay here. I could have taken my pensions, civil service, military, otherwise, went anywhere in the country. A lot better weather, and I promise you, a lot better taxes. I've never lived anywhere where it cost me so much just to license a vehicle. But I stay here because I see an inherent quality in Lincoln, a quality of life, clean air, clean parks. And the traffic's not really all that bad most days, except for downtown from 4:30 till 6:30. It's not that bad. Once the bypass is open, I think that will probably alleviate some of that. But please, just don't keep handing the mirror this power. The power belongs to the people. We've invested a portion of that power, or we have vested a portion of that power in all of you.
One minute.
Don't make us sorry and don't abuse it. Set us free. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Van Shahn Blythe. And Jane, I stand in solidarity for our truckers that are going across Canada and other countries in the United States, which soon to come here in the United States from California to Washington, D.C. This is happening across the world. And what a joke yesterday. Seventy-plus-thousand people at the Super Bowl. All these movie stars not wearing masks. Most people not wearing masks. But today, kids in California went to school masked. That is just wrong. And you need to let us have our freedoms. This has been, thank you, Samuel, for pointing it out, over seven hundred days. I urge all of you, and for the two who are not here tonight, to go back three Mondays ago and listen to Senator Ron Johnson had a roundtable in Washington, D.C., with doctors and scientists across the world. Did any of you listen to it? No, probably not. But the truth is here. It's coming out more and more every day about those silly masks you're wearing. I don't have one friend that wears them. You don't even have to wear them at Costco. So they're a joke. So we want our freedoms, and go, truckers.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else I would like to address the council at this time? Ms. Kinsey?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. I'm going to change the subject. You've all heard of the Black Lives Matter organization, which has been in the news and causing dissension and organization over the country of the United States. Recently, information has come out that they have been discredited and disgraced due to lost leadership of their original goals and also for mishandling of finances. Originally, they wanted to do away with the family, the objectives of the founding fathers, to destroy the United States and to call for the end of their opinion that there is white supremacy in the United States. white supremacy in the United States, in all our institutions, and in all white people. The original founder, one of them, was Patricia Collers, who was the mother of Trayvon Martin. She has left the organization and has used money taken from it to purchase millions of dollars of private property. The website that is left lists the names of members in charge, but they have stated that they know nothing about the finances. The states of California and Indiana, as well as the attorney generals or legal authorities in Washington DC, have begun investigations into the organization's finances, and they expect to file charges against it. The records show that the finances exceed $50 million, and that doesn't include the ones that have been taken away from the organization. The local city and school system and Lincoln Journal-Star have appeared to support the Black Lives Matter organization in Lincoln with legal authority to come and speak at the city council to make some havoc down at the city council building a few years ago, costing millions of dollars. So we call for the city council, for the Lincoln Public Schools, to remove information that gives authority or that blesses the Black Lives Movement Matter in the local organization. It should be investigated, and the charges which were dropped against them brought forth also into the legal authorities. They did not start out with blessed objectives, as I have stated. And it comes now full circle that they have proved that their organization is not in the best interest of our country.
One minute.
You have spoken and passed a resolution, an ordinance, to speak up for minorities. Also remember that minorities are not perfect, that they can have law violations, that they can take money that it is not theirs, and also that they need to be chastised if that is the case of their behavior. The tyranny of the minority is not a blessing. They do need to be protected, and they need to be recognized, and that is a tenet of our country. But also, they are not perfect, and they can cause problems in our country and in our society.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the council at this time? Is there anyone else here to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, Councilwoman Raybold, do you recognize?
I just want to take a moment. I know that there were a lot of things said tonight, but we have to keep these two issues separate, and I keep hearing kind of overlap and conflating the two. First is our declaration of emergency. We're still in a declaration of emergency from our flooding back in March of 2019, and I believe we're still in a declaration of emergency with the flooding that we had in May of 2017 for the city of Lincoln. These things are important, and I know that we had the Lancaster County Emergency Management Director come and speak to that, Nebraska Emergency Management Director come and speak to the reasons why those declarations of emergencies matter. They talked about two phases, the response phase and then the recovery phase. So we have gotten through the response phase from the 2017 floods around the city. We have gotten through the response phase of the flooding of March of 2019. We're still in the recovery phase from March of 2019 where it knocked out our wellfills. So we are still trying to do the recovery for that, along with other elements that have happened. Right now with COVID, and this is where kind of the conflation and overlap happens, we're still in the declaration of emergency because we are still in the response phase. We are still responding to the crisis with our hospitalizations, with the positive cases that are still in 16%, 16%, which is incredibly high. So we're going to be in, I don't want you to be upset, but I just want you to acknowledge that we will be in a declaration of emergency until we get through and complete the recovery process. Why does that matter? Because we get reimbursement from Nebraska Emergency Management, working with Federal Emergency Management. These are vitally important to assist all who have been impacted and negatively impacted by these disasters. So that's one thing. Your other concern is with our directed health measures. That is a totally separate issue, and the authority has been granted and has been supported and sustained by law, showing that our health director does have the authority to make these decisions. And thankfully, our decisions have been some of the best decisions in our entire state. It's shown in the record-keeping that we have had the least number of fatalities of a population our size of 300,000. I don't ever get emotional and think anything that we do on the city council impacts lives, but in this case, it certainly does. And I support the directed health measures because in our city and in our county, we have had a reduced loss of life because of the pandemic. We're still in a response phase, and until we get to the recovery phase, we will still have a declaration of emergency. Whether you think it's right or it's wrong, it impacts how we're able to fund and take care of the people who have been impacted the most. So that declaration of emergency takes cares of our citizens in the city and the county. That's our job for public safety and to protect the well-being of the public. And as long as we have that authority with the emergency declaration, that gives us access to federal, state, local funding that we would not have access to without that. So I just wanted, I felt that was important, to keep those two separate and to really clear up some of those misperceptions that keep cropping up all the time. So thank you for allowing me, Chair, for stating these important things. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call the roll?
Shoob?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried, five-zero.
We stand adjourned.